Hey Chris.
Okay.
Everything good, Chris? Can you hear me?
I can. So I'm fine.
Alright, sounds good.
Music checked in.
Going back on mute.
Is Cindy on?
Don't see her yet.
How about Mike?
Mike's here.
Yeah.
Can you all hear me?
Yes.
LeVar?
Oh, yes.
Alright.
Can you guys hear me? This is Mike.
Yes. The one on the web. Hey, Chris?
Yes.
Could you forward Cindy the email so she could come in as a panelist?
Sure.
Okay. Chris is going to forward email. Okay.
Chris, Jackie can't. It's saying she's already that the host has another meeting in progress. And she tried closing out on the last one.
Feeling they're probably using the wrong link. I have Roxanna saying something similar.
Alright, I'll just tell.
The easiest way to handle this is for them to go to the link for the open session on the agenda, and then I will move them into the panel. Chris, you know, I got that message too, and then it eventually just let me in. Okay. Alright. Looks like Roxanna is in, or at least she texted me.
Yes, I'm in.
So, I don't know if Gwen was trying. I haven't heard from her. Cindy, it looks like is the one that we are missing from the admin side. Let me see if I can.
Gwen said she wouldn't be joining us, Chris.
Right, Gwen said she wouldn't.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, Chris?
Yes.
Are you trying to call Cindy?
I'm on the phone with Cindy.
I was gonna say, it looks like she's in the meeting.
She is in the meeting. We're working through an audio issue.
Got it, okay.
Okay.
I'd say for our first time, we're doing pretty good so far.
Chris, you're doing a great job.
Yeah, Chris is doing great. I'm the one who's incompetent.
Ralph, that's just your technology. It's not you.
I think it's a combo package. Cindy will hopefully be joining us soon for the audio portion.
A board meeting with cats is the best board meeting ever. Chris, I just sent you an email from Jackie, or a text from me.
Okay.
Hello.
Alright.
I think I'm in. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Your cat is really friendly, man.
He's drilling on the laptop. But thank you.
Alright, let me see if I can help Jackie out here.
Tom, do you have a turtle by any chance?
Gail, is there any way I can get in touch with Jackie? Can she call me, or can you text me her number?
Yeah.
Please mute.
Hi, Jackie said to go ahead and start, and Chris, she's calling you on the 847 number.
So Sarah, why don't you get us going as VP?
Okay, alright. So it's now 8:02 PM, and we are re-entering open session. If we could start with the introductory reports, please?
Ms. Camberton?
Yes, there were five FOIA requests, and three were resolved.
And the only announcement that the superintendent has is that we've been working vigorously to stay apprised of ISB and the governor's guidelines regarding the mandated Act of God days.
Thank you. I thought you heard Adam. Are there any public comments?
Yes. There are, and I will read them. The first one is from Monica Sheehan, and she said, "Good evening, my public comments. Tonight cover four issues, and I respectively request an email response regarding them. First, please clarify the scope and total project, total cost of Project 1 of the Imagine Plan. According to news reports, the project has pre-construction overruns of more than $4 million, and the board and administration have discussed cuts to the project, including eliminating 25% of its classroom renovations. Given that academics in the school, or is the school's core mission, it's reasonable to expect that no cuts will be made to academic and special education facility needs, and any overruns." Just a second. Just a second, please. "And any overruns be paid for out of the $20 million set aside by the board at the superintendent's request for urgent needs in Project 2. It consists largely of a 37-meter-by-25-yard swimming pool in a 600-seat natatorium. Second, this issue is in regards to improving communication and transparency between the District 200 Board and the community. Specifically, requests have been made to the board, and it has declined to pursue collaboration with the village to use one of its two broadcast-equipped rooms to livestream District 200's two monthly meetings. The village's broadcast capability vastly exceeds District 90, or District 200. According to a FOIA response from the village, there is no scheduled conflict with District 200 using one of the broadcast equipment rooms. Moreover, it only requires one person to operate the equipment to livestream and record a meeting, and only one security guard to be present for any meeting held after 5 o'clock. With this new information, please reconsider your decision. Third, I request that the board's conflicts of interest policy be updated to state clearly that any board member that receives direct or indirect funding from a teachers' union, or is a member of a teachers' union, recuse oneself from voting on any union-related issue. Just as Robert Reacher, a member of the Board of the Cook County Health System, recuses himself from union vote due to his union ties, two members of the District 200 Board with financial ties to the teacher union should have recused themselves from an August 2019 vote. The 4-3 vote overturned the 2017 Board's unanimous vote denying special treatment for English teacher Paul Noble. That vote will cost taxpayers at least $80,000. And fourth, what is the justification for the Board's practice of increasing teacher salaries by 6% in their final years of employment, hiking their pensions by more than 26%? This question was previously asked, but the Board's response evaded the question. No, District 97's pension-sweetening practice sunsets this year." Then there was a public comment from Mary Pickul. "On the email sent to the families on March 18th, I was pleased to read that meals will be distributed to students on free and reduced lunches, as well as those in need." The email read, "We will have a meal pickup again for students on free and reduced lunch, or simply in need. If this is correct, please help to get this information out to the community. I believe more children would benefit, and right now, I think most understand that meals are only for students on reduced and free lunch. Nearby, Cisterro District 99 is offering free meals during state-mandated school closures to all children in Cisterro who are 18 and under. I know that Cisterro has different demographics, but this is impressive. The cutoff amount to receive free and reduced lunches is rather low, so it is good to hear that the district is trying to do more. Thank you." Then Linda Brennan made these comments. "A group of tennis parents requests that the Board ask the school to work with a construction company and resolve how to keep all of the courts open during construction." She had attached in her comments a Word document that I will forward to the Board that outlines some of the work they have done since presenting at the February 27th Board meeting to help facilitate a solution. Since the document is signed by four families, we should be allowed 12 minutes for the clerk to read it. Alternatively, board members could read it separately." So that's what I'll do. I will forward that to you. And that's the end of the comments.
Next, we have the consent agenda. Is there, are there any items that people would like to pull off for further discussion? Okay, I take that as a note. Gail, should I just wing it? I don't have the wording.
Just motion to approve.
Yeah. Is there a motion to approve the following consent items? I'm just not, do I have to read them all right now, or do I read them at the end?
Well, you read them now.
Okay.
You have them.
Yeah. A, check dispersments and financial resolutions dated March 19, 2020. B, monthly treasures report. C, monthly financials. D, educational technology firewall licensing. Sorry, I'm getting a weird internet message. Educational technology vendor for network hardware and licensing purchases. F, educational technology vendor for network hardware installation. G, stipend review committee recommendations. H, renewal of IHSA membership for 2020-2021 school year. I, renewal of treasurer's bond. J, staffing recommendations for the 2020-2021 school year. K, personnel recommendations, including new hires, summer school retirements, and transfers. L, policy 2105. Ethics and gift ban for first reading. M, open and closed minutes of February 27th and March 19th special, and March 10th emergency 2020. And a declaration that the closed session audio tapes of August 2018 shall be destroyed. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Oh, sorry.
Hold call.
I always get this wrong.
Mr. Isley?
Yes.
Mr. Martyri?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Kowski?
Yes.
Ms. Feivey?
Yes.
Mr. Barron?
Yes.
And Dr. Moore? Did you get online? Okay, she's not there. Yes, a motion carried. Jackie Moore is on that.
Good. Master plan. I'll hand it over to Dr. Prit Adams.
The Facilities Master Plan, but I don't see the board memo in here. So I'm gonna wing it. The Facilities Master Plan, tenure maintenance, it's our regular update to the board. Making this presentation, is my speaker off for me? Okay, making this presentation is Mike Kariosha, Chief Operations Officer. This is compliance with Strategic Plan Priority 4.
Good evening, everyone. Can you all hear me? Anyone not hearing me? Okay, great.
Yeah.
So, thank you all for your attention. I'm going to go through this, and please stop me as we go. Can you go to the second slide, please? Okay, we started off with roughly about 40 items, and we tried to brainstorm and pick out all the items we felt would be essential for us to take care of. We had a pretty high threshold. We didn't put the smaller items in, but really the major items. We then took those items, and we prioritized them. As you can see by this, by the first bullet, we looked at the items that were, that had to be done, that could not wait until after Project 1 was completed, and we called those emergency maintenance. We also had a set of items that were going to be, well, actually, one item specifically that was going to be impacted by the construction work itself. That was the tennis court. And then we had a number of other items. We had an opportunity to do some things once we had the south cafeteria demolished, and we were going to use that opportunity to do some things that needed to be done specifically. That the big items there are the basement, and we had some heaving with some bad soil under the tunnels, too, that have to be replaced. So those were the criteria we used. And basically, everything else then was prioritized based upon need, urgency of need, and laid out in the years subsequent to the Project 1 years. And then finally, and this is sort of the main point I want to make, this, the purpose of this 10-year plan is really not to, this particular presentation was really not to talk about every individual item, and to really look at the specific costs. We really made some very rough estimates of those costs. They're very high level, and the actual costs won't really be determined till after we've completed our design, and usually that happens right, you know, a year to 18 months before we're ready to do the projects themselves. So, Chris, can you go to the next slide, please? Some other things I'd like to mention. As you might imagine, this, it's really important to understand that these are, what's actually laid out in this plan is really just a current snapshot of what the need is. Classic example of that is when we originally did this plan in December, not this past December, the one before. We had the roof on the plan, but it wasn't deemed an emergency, as it turns out to be, as we've had a number of leaks, and our attempts to repair the roof have been dismal failures. So because of that, we only, things shift around in this plan. So the roofing has actually jumped to the front of the plan, and because it is so expensive, it's pushed a number of other things back. So that's really the way I envision this plan being used going forward, is at least once a year, getting together and presenting what is the current view of the state of this campus, and then making some assessment on how that works out, how much money it's going to cost to maintain it, and obviously, how we fund these costs. The, another assumption which is kind of important to understand in this plan, there are some costs we estimated for Project 2. They're very rough, but they were, they were put in the plan, and then we didn't count them in the final costs, because we're assuming in this plan that Project 2 will be approved, and will be approved, and will start in 2025. And there's about $6.1 million. That's a very, very rough estimate of what we anticipate. Things we would not do if we were actually working, if actually Project 2 was approved, that's a rough estimate of how much would be included there. One of the things I don't want to, I do want to mention, it's important that we keep this in our, in our minds, is that we are really assuming that the pools are going to just continue to operate the way they are. And just to be cautious about that, we're most definitely going to take another look at the pool conditions. They were, they were never in good shape when we were looking at them last time. I don't think they're in much better shape, but we really want to get some kind of a formal study done to just make an assessment of where we are with the pools at this time. The danger there is we're in a little bit of a quandary with respect to the pools, because we're probably going to be very limited in what we can do on those pools without losing our grandfather status. So once we start to make any major changes in that space, we're gonna, we're gonna have a situation where we're not going to be allowed to make those changes. So we might be caught in a little bit of a situation there, but we're gonna do an assessment to see where we are with the pools. Next item, third bullet on this page, is health, life, safety. Those costs are actually in the plan, but they're not included in the total, simply because those are levied and budgeted separately. And then last but not least, the fourth bullet. We had about $7 million of maintenance that we just plain left off the plan, because we were already about $8 to $9 million over budget in the 10-year span, and we determined that we would push those out after 10 years. So, Chris, can you go to the next slide, please? So we took those 40 items, and we basically categorized them into the categories. Chris, can you go over the left-hand side and highlight the categories right to the, to the far left, the first column? We put the categories of accessibility, building envelope, classrooms, construction impact, corridors, educational technology upgrades, fields and stadiums. MEP stands for mechanical, electrical, and plumbing, miscellaneous maintenance, the urgent maintenance, and then we subtitled those. And below that subtotal line, we have all of the soft costs that include things that are not really included in the construction, environmentals, those are asbestos removal and so forth. We also put an escalation line and a contingency line in there. So you can see everything below. We also put an escalation line and a contingency line in there. So you can see, uh, everything below the line really increases the, the base cost of the construction by quite a bit. So Chris, can you now move over to the bottom section, bottom towards the, uh, right-hand side? I want to call your attention, oh, by the way, the yellowish, uh, color on this page is the timeframe where project one is being, uh, done. So I highlighted that so you get a sense of what we, we're really trying to get done. And as you could see, we really tried to limit the amount of work we're doing in that timeframe. The, the vast majority of that work is really just the roof. The roof has been, uh, has been extreme, is going to be extremely expensive to repair and and the vast majority of the costs. In the timeframe between two thousand and twenty-one and two thousand and twenty-four has, has to do with the roof. So Chris, then in the, the summary section, the bottom right. So if you look at the summary of the cost between two thousand and twenty-one and two thousand and twenty-four, again, the yellowish color in that section. You can see we're pretty close to our budget with respect to our maintenance in that timeframe. We're a little bit over, but we feel like we're close enough. We could probably manage close to budget on that. And then when you get to the out years, two thousand and twenty-five and twenty-third to two thousand and thirty, this is where we really sort of lose it. Uh, because of the fact that we pushed all of the maintenance that was closer in out past project one timeframe. And, um, this is where we start to run into trouble. And as you can see, the whole ten-year plan, we're about nine point two million dollars over budget. Now again, this is just a snapshot. We have to manage our way through it. What I wanted to point out here is the, the situation that we're running into, which is the fact that we've got a number of maintenance items. That are in, uh, in need of being done. Uh, we haven't been, uh, really diligent. We've been, we've been actually reacting to the urgency, the things that needed to be done. And because of that, we've, we haven't done all of the proactive, uh, preventative maintenance that needed, needs to be done. And over time, that catches up with you. So, uh, Chris, can you go to the next slide, please? Okay, so what we'd like to recommend, one of the things that we had done in the past, which I think was, uh, was, was a huge mistake. Is we, we basically reported just the construction costs. We didn't put those owner soft costs and the hazardous materials and contingency costs in the estimates. So we were basically underestimating the total cost of construction. And what ended up happening is we would then absorb that overage by cutting scope. Uh, so that's the first bullet. The second bullet, which is even more, uh, concerning. Is that we did not build in the past, we have not built any escalation costs into our expenses. So, uh, we're being told it's about four percent per year, uh, escalation. So over a ten, ten-year period, uh, that's significant, uh, actually year over year, it's significant. But over ten years, something you paid a hundred thousand dollars for this year, ten years from now, we cost a hundred and forty thousand dollars based upon that escalation. And then all that being said, even if we, we did those things, we still have a situation where we have some catch-up work to do. And we really have to realistically look at what our budget should be, given the state of various port parts of the campus. And determine what is a realistic budget number to put into place to be able to meet that. So, um, that's all I had to present, and at this point I would be happy to take any questions.
Okay, this is Martieri. Mike, I want to thank you for this. You know, from the time I joined the board, I wanted the ten-year rolling plan. And I think it's crucial for us from a board standpoint to try to manage our finances responsibly and ensure that the building is well-maintained. So I have a question and, and, and it goes to the maintenance cost that we are deferring or putting off and the preventative maintenance costs. Uh, is there, do you have a detail with some specificity of what those items are and what their associated costs are? By the way, I completely agree that the soft costs and contingencies have to go in as well. That's just appropriate budgeting. So I'm just wondering if you have more of a detail on these hard, high-end, not high-end, these needed maintenance and preventive maintenance item.
Absolutely. Uh, as I mentioned, we didn't want to go through the, there's a detailed list, which I'd be happy to share with the board. Of about forty items, about thirty-nine, forty items, uh, which is, you know, it has extensive detail of each item and what costs are associated. Understand though, those costs are fairly high level. And, uh, we'll probably would have to change as we got further into the scope of them. But yes, we do. Uh, that, those numbers were summarized on, I think it was page, Chris, can you go back a couple pages, please? Those categories that you see here, uh, were basically summarized based, these make up those forty items. So it was just condensed to these to just, to not have it be overwhelming. But yes, we absolutely have a detailed list, which I'd be happy to share.
I, I think it'd be valuable information for the board. If you could share that with the board, that'd be awesome.
You bet.
And then, you know, and then as we as a board go looking at project two. And whether or not to approve all of it, part of it, whatever, I think we ought to seriously consider some of these needed maintenance items. Particularly preventative maintenance items. And possibly either build them into or adjust our expectations on what project two should really encompass. But the bottom line is, these things really do need to be considered comprehensively with project two.
Couldn't agree more. Thank you.
It's Gina, I have a question.
Yes, Gina.
Actually, I have a couple of questions. My part of mine had to do with the maintenance, um, pieces. And I'm curious, because I, it feels like things just keep escalating. I'm curious if the, um. The maintenance costs that you have accounted for that, thank you Ralph for asking for that detail because that was, that was part of my question, but are they adequate? Like, have you looked at, like, how far out have you looked as far as maintenance goes? And are we really planning for the, for more accurate numbers in that area? And then my second question is, um, those escalation counts that you talked about. You said that they weren't included initially. I'm just curious why they weren't included initially, if they're a standard piece.
Uh, okay, let me answer the first one. I can, I can answer that. Uh, let me finish writing the second one. Okay, so for the first one, we actually did look out, uh, actually, we looked out eleven years. And, uh, that was simply because I couldn't do math and I thought twenty-one to thirty-one was ten years, but it's actually eleven years. So we, we really looked out, it's, uh, pretty far out. And we, uh, a lot of the costs which are, which were never included when we looked at project one were things like the, um, the fields. So replacing the football field, replacing the south field, uh, the stadium wasn't part of project one. I'm sorry, wasn't part of the whole Imagine, uh, plan. So there's some pretty significant parts of the campus. Which were not, uh, considered because Imagine had a different scope, uh, in terms of what they were looking at. So we, we absolutely included those and I think we did, we did a pretty good job of brainstorming, uh, and, and putting everything on the list. Uh, to, to say, I can honestly say we, we hit everything. It is a snapshot of what we believe is, are the pertinent items right now. Uh, if you ask us in six months, it might shift a little bit and a year it might shift again. So I think we've got all the big items on there. The order in which they occur will probably jump around, but I think we've got all the big items. In terms of the more accurate mo, numbers, that was sort of your second part of the first question. Uh, we, we sort of, we did a high-level view of this. I think what we'll probably do, if you look at the numbers, um, that are showing in that yellow area, those are very solid. So probably three to five years, especially as we try to bundle some of these costs together. That we, we had to, we had to do the maintenance together with the project one work, which is why all of these, uh, costs that are sitting in here with that yellow are pretty solid. So we're very comfortable with those. The costs in the out years, the twenty-five to thirty are much less, they're, they're much looser, they're much, um, higher level. So I think as we get closer, this will be a rolling process where we refine them as we go further. And try to get big chunks of dollars. We have a better sense of what those costs really are. And now that was your first question. The second question, in terms of why escalations and, uh, weren't, and soft costs weren't included. I, I don't have a good answer. I can tell you from, from the time I, I've been working in this position, which is, I think about eighteen months or so. Uh, honestly, I didn't have a great understanding of that until very recently. And as soon as I understood that, I started building those costs in. But when we're talking about costs, what was being quoted usually were the costs of, of construction. And not the total cost, which is construction plus contingency plus all those soft costs. So, um, I can't speak to why they weren't included before, uh, before my tenure here. I can tell you, even in my first, my first year or so here, I don't think I had a good sense of what all the costs were and how they all worked together.
I just have, thank you so much, Mike. I just have one more comment and it's.
Sure.
You mentioned having the, um, having an update at least once a year and, um, my request would be that we would do that more frequently than once a year. Yeah.
You betcha.
Yeah, Mike, when we initially discussed this, we, we were gonna, you were gonna do it twice a year at least, rolling ten-year, uh, analysis because things do change, you know, the weather, et cetera.
Stuff breaks. So I think having at least twice a year, uh, a rolling report would be helpful.
Yeah, that's, that, I don't, that's not a problem at all.
Hi, Mike, this is Craig. Can you hear me?
That's great.
Um, I guess I'd like us to add something to this or, or some thoughts. I mean, we developed. You know, for lack of a better word, I think we developed, uh, sort of four million a year, a, a little bit in a top-down fashion, uh, based on what we felt we could afford. You've now done sort of a bottom up, which looks like we have more projects than we do costs. I think that I would like us to do a little bit of work on what is, uh, what should we be spending? In terms of, uh, percentage of the capital cost of our building. If, if I just do that back of the envelope, you know, our, our building is easily a, a two hundred million dollar asset. Uh, we, you know, that, that, just given the size of project one, we did some looks at some similar things. It's easily that. And at two hundred million dollars, a two to four percent benchmark would suggest that we're underspending, uh, in terms of maintenance. So I, I think we should try to get a feel for, you know, not maybe, you know, more strategically what that number ought to be. And come back to the board and, and sort of challenge us to make sure that we're allocating the right amount of money on an annual basis. Uh, to it rather than just be stuck on the four million dollar number.
Yeah, thank you, Craig. Actually, we did, can you guys hear me? Yes. Okay, uh, we actually, um, we actually did a calculation like that and we developed a model. Um, I didn't get a chance to really refine it. Uh, the estimate we have is it's more like a four hundred million dollar asset.
Um. All right, well, that would even be, you know, more.
Right.
Along the lines. I mean, if my, my gauge, and you would need to get some more data, but my gauge says it, it, even at two percent. On a four hundred million dollar asset.
Yep.
Then we're underspending on what we should be to take care of it properly.
Yep. Yeah, I, I actually have that model. I will refine it and I'll be happy to share that with the board at a future meeting.
Yeah, I think that studies of percentage of, uh, replacement cost for maintenance are not too hard to come by.
Yep.
And to Craig's point, I, which I, which I think is spot on and part of the reason I've been asking for this rolling thing. You know, for thirty years, not, not much planning was done for the facilities and I think we're playing catch-up. And it'd be nice to catch up and catch up in a rational and strategic pla, fashion. And start building an appropriate budget for maintaining the asset that we have. Because the bottom line is this asset, this facility is all about the safety of the students and faculty and administrators that are, that are attending it every day. And so we have to do what's right about facilities, planning and management.
Thank you.
Tom, it's Tom. Um, I, um, I support with both, what both Craig and Ralph were saying. First, thanks for putting this together. Um, it, it does concern me greatly that, you know, we, we see deferred, um, work. Uh, and stuff being not even included, um, and being, having been involved in facilities for a good part of my career. That's not the way to run, you know, run a facility. Um, so a, a couple of comments. One, you, you did share with us a report in response to a question, kind of getting at what. Um, Craig's question was from a different angle, which is, you know, what, what, what do others do in terms of, uh, spend? And, uh, you know, if, if there's any synopsis of, of what that is, my general take of it is, is that we're underspending in maintenance. Um, but I'd, I'd appreciate any thoughts on that. That's my first question. Um, secondly, um, I do feel that not having CPI built in is, is not realistic. Um, you know, that's, that, that should be what we do. It concerns me that the escalation exceeds CPI. And that's a long-term downward slope. If we're, if, if, if we've got a four percent growth factor and inflation's been running at two percent. Um, we're losing money as time goes on. So that's a concern I have. And, and the bigger concern is if we're underspending in maintenance. And yet our overall costs are on the, the higher end, something's got to give. So, I mean, it, we, we can't just sit there, you know, we, and I agree with Ralph's point. We have been short in our spend in this area for a period of time. Um, as we've looked to these big projects, et cetera. So, um, we've got to look at the, the overhaul cost picture. I have a question, really maybe for Ralph to, to chime in on related to this, which is, I don't know, in the, in the adequacy models, is there a, a facilities valuation that's in that model?
There is not, Tom. So that just goes, uh, the, the adequacy model just goes to current operations. It doesn't go to any capital or facilities cost.
Okay, so then we would use what, you know, what Craig was kind of trying to get us to and what Mike was talking about. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, Tom, I, I, I think there were a couple of questions embedded in there.
Yeah.
Uh, one of them is, you know, you had talked about the fact, I, I don't know if you were asking if you, we feel we're underspending in maintenance and if that's your question, the answer is absolutely. Uh, I, I, I guess I was trying in this presentation to make that point. I think with the detail, what you'll see is how I categorize these various items and you'll get a sense of, of what, how bad the problem is. I, I was going to ask Josh, um, Josh Serniak, if you're on. Josh, did you want to unmute yourself? Do you want to talk about escalation of, uh, construction? Chris, I, you may have to unmute Josh.
Uh, s- sorry, Mike, I'm, I'm here.
Okay.
Um, cause I was actually just digging up, um, some information on escalation. There, there's, there seems to be. Some misconception about escalation and inflation. Uh, they're, they're not one in the same. Uh, infla, inflation is actually just one small component that goes into escalation. And, uh, uh, let's see here, if, I, I believe I may have found. Uh, what I was looking for. If you just give me one moment.
And while he's looking, um, Tom, your last point as far as the overall spend, I totally agree with you and, and I think Ralph, you brought it up earlier. When we look at project two, we absolutely have to build in some, some kind of a maintenance component to that project. To say, you know, how do we build in some of the, how do we do some catch-up as part of that next phase of construction? Versus keeping these as two separate entities. They have to be going together.
Yeah, I, I completely agree with that, Mike. I mean, we have to, we have to have an integrated facilities plan that covers needs and wants both, right? And, and identifying the needs and the things that we have to do from a maintenance standpoint are crucial. And it's sort of core to the responsibility of the board that we provide, uh, a, a little bit of fiduciary oversight there. So I'm really happy with what you're doing and the focus you're bringing to this.
Thank you.
So I, so I did find the, um, the, the piece that I was digging for on, on inflation and escalation. So. So in, inflation is, is, uh, you know, to speak about this more precisely, inflation is one of the factors that cause escalation. But there are many other factors, um, that go into escalation and, and some of those examples would be supply and demand. Uh, political effects, uh, and so an, an example of that would be tariffs, which not too long ago, that was a big, uh, um, topic in this country. Technological changes, environmental effects, and then now we can add a new one to this and that's pandemics. So. Um, and, and, and there's, there's probably, as everyone can imagine, uh, we're gonna have a major shift now. Uh, coming out of, of, and hopefully soon, uh, uh, as, as we move forward and, and, and how the economy reacts to, to the current global situation.
Thank you, Josh. Tom, do we answer your questions?
Yes, thank you.
Any others?
I have a question about the prioritization of the projects. Um, you know, as we just saw with our leak that we had in that replacement of a huge piece of equipment, that could be quickly. that could be quickly, you know, if we prioritize this sort of, miss, you know, if we make mistakes in prioritization, we could easily have expenditures, um, that far exceed what our estimates are, even within the next few years. Can you just speak to how those were prioritized or what criterias we're looking at? I mean, obviously urgency was one of them, but I'm assuming there were other factors as well.
Yeah, and, and, uh, thank you for that question. Uh, and I'm gonna ask Fred or Jeff, if you're on, if you wanna add to what I'm saying, please feel free to do so. The, the comment I would make is there's certain things we know are on a specific timeframe. And this is, this is very similar to what in my other role when I was in technology. You know the useful life of certain things. So for example, when you put a turf field in, you know how long that turf, turf field is going to last, how long it's warranted for, and when it's, when its useful life is done. So things like that, we basically slot in when they're due. Uh, other cases, we, we have some catch-up work to be done. And I'll give you the, the, the biggest example is that the fieldhouse is in pretty bad shape, both inside and out. And we've been doing patchwork just to keep it going. Uh, but it, you, we need to spend some significant funds there to get the fieldhouse back to where it needs to be. I'm not only talking about the rust on the, on the, uh, on the handle, on the, uh, hand, ha- handrails and so forth, but the inside, the, the masonry, it's, it's in dire need of help. So that's just the case where we basically looked at the things in the current state they're in and we looked at which of those things could be pushed, pushed out? Which of those things, by virtue of pushing them out, would make them even worse? Building envelope is not only the roof, but it's also the masonry. And as that deteriorates, everything deteriorates. Because you, if you can't maintain the, the structure of the building itself, then you get all kinds of damage on top of that. So things like that, Sarah, really influence what moves things forward. That's why the roof jumped to the beginning. Because if you don't have a good roof, the damage that could be done by water coming in is significant throughout the whole building. So similarly, the, the masonry is the same thing. If the tuck pointing isn't done properly, water gets in there and the deterioration costs even more money on the back end to get, to get things fixed. So it's a combination of things that we know have a useful life, that were slotted in where they needed to be slotted in, and things that we know are in fairly bad shape because they have not been kept up. We haven't had enough money to keep them up appropriately and we've gotta do some catch-up to, to bring them up to where they need to be. Uh, Fred or Jeff, did you wanna add to that?
Uh, Mike, this is Fred. Um, I, I think you covered it other, pretty well, other than it's not the fieldhouse. It was the stadium building, I think.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, Fred. Oops.
Um, I, I was just gonna agree with what you were saying, basically life expectancy of equipment. We know the turf fields every, about every eight, eight to nine years need to be replaced. Um, and just stuff that's been neglected for the last probably 30 years. That is, is sort of shifting things around a little bit. But I think you pretty much covered everything.
Thank you, Fred.
Anybody else have any other questions or comments?
I, I have one other question, if I may. And, and that is, um, Mike, as we, we look at the plan in the, the hori- the 10-year horizon, is, is the, um, the spread, how much of it is, is dictated by resource availability? Meaning that, you know what, if we wanted to spend more money, we could do thing, w- we still would be restricted because we can only do the work in the summer. And, you know, I, it, how much of it is that? Or could we front-load things?
We could do more, but the reason you see that yellow highlighted the way it is, there's no way on earth we could do more in these next four years.
Okay.
You've got so much going on, you've got such a small window. And that's, you, these next four years are really gonna be pushing. But we certainly could, and I'm not suggesting that we catch up in one year. I think if we, if we bump, and we can give you what that number is, we haven't calculated that. But if we bump our yearly maintenance spend, year over year, we would eventually catch up. The problem is what, what ends up happening because we haven't included some of these other factors is when the costs go up, scope ends up getting reduced to cover the costs. We, we're not over budget. So that's, that's where we have to stop.
Thank you.
That's the basis for the recommendations. Am I correct, Mike?
Yes.
Thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
Um, Jackie, I know you're on the phone. I don't know if you wanna take over or if you want me to keep going.
Um, if you could keep going because I'm audio only, so when the screens are up, it, I'm not following that way. I'm just going by the attachments.
Um, next are our action items.
Um, Sarah, could you speak just a little louder?
All right, I'll get closer. Um, do we have a motion to approve, um, 'cause it's item B, approval of project budget package?
We're moved.
Okay.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that? Who said that?
Tom.
Thank you.
I thought it was a second as well.
You know, second.
Mike is prepared to ask, to, uh, ask, answer any questions that the board may have regarding this.
No questions.
I have a question.
Mike, I, I have one simple one. I just wanna verify that the, the, the bid, as I, as I read it, is slightly below, I believe, what the budget was. Am I, did I read that correctly? And, and was that inclusive? It, when we add in the construction fees, is that, are we still in budget?
We are, because the budget, yeah, we are. The, the short answer is yes.
Thank you.
We were, we were so under budget, we were able to take a couple of alternates, too. So we, we really worked out well on this particular portion.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, I'll call the roll then. Mr. Marchieri?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Kowski?
Yes.
Ms. Feige?
Yes.
Mr. Baron?
Yes.
Mr. Isley? Mr. Isley?
Muted, yeah.
I'll go to Dr. Moore.
Yes.
Come back to that, uh, Mr. Isley.
I think we lost him, Gail.
No, he's there.
I see him. He's just unable to speak.
Yeah, we just can't hear, but he's there.
How about now?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Um, our second act item is approval of administrative and non-affiliated personnel salaries for the 2020, 2021 school year. Um, is there a motion?
So moved.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Isley?
Yes.
Mr. Baron?
Yes.
Mr. Marchieri?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Kowski?
No.
Ms. Feige?
Yes.
And Dr. Moore?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Our next item is approval of salary increases for food service employees for the 2020, 2021 school year. Um, is there a motion?
I'll move it. It's Gina.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay. Okay, uh, Mr. Marchieri?
Yes.
Mr. Baron?
Yes.
Mr. Isley?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Kowski?
Yes.
Ms. Feige? Ms. Feige?
Yes.
And Dr. Moore?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to our next item is approval of resolution authorizing dismissal and non-reemployment of teachers hired under temporary contracts. So moved?
Second.
Second.
Do we have any discussion? Okay, um, Mr. Baron?
Yes.
Mr. Isley?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Kowski?
Yes.
Ms. Feige?
Yes.
Mr. Marchieri?
Yes.
And Dr. Moore?
Yes.
Thank you. Next is G, approval of memorandum of agreements with SCIU collective bargaining groups. So moved? I'm sorry, who was that? Sarah. Thank you.
Which item? Sarah, was it G or F?
Uh, we're on G, correct?
No, I think.
Did I skip that?
I think you skipped F.
Yeah.
Let me back up. F, um, all right. Uh, approval of resolution authorizing dismissal and non-reemployment of a second-year probationary teacher. So moved?
Second.
Do we have any discussions to this item? Okay, I'm hearing none. Gail? Um, Mr. Isley?
Yes.
Mr. Baron?
Uh, yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Feige?
Yes.
Mr. Marchieri?
Yes.
Mr. Kowski?
Yes.
And Dr. Moore?
Yes.
Thank you. Now we are on to G, approval of memorandum of agreements with SCIU collective bargaining groups. So moved?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions, if I may. Is, that, um, one is, can you provide, who initiated this? Was this a, the district initiated or the bargaining unit initiation? Could you provide some insight in that? That, and my second question is, do we know anything about what, um, D97 or 90 might be doing in this capacity?
Let's see. We had, I, I'll start out. We started getting questioning, um, when we went to a reduced staff of people who had to come in and work and people who didn't. And so, um, it was cabinet who sat down, sat down to discuss, how do we get, uh, essential people in the building for, when there are essential things that need to be done? When we are technically, or when we are on a mandated school closure under Act of God and a resolution from the governor. And felt if we wanted to get, uh, individuals in, we need to have a conversation. We reached out to our legal counsel as to how we should go about doing this and taking things into consideration. And then we actually sat down and met with each bargaining group to just see how they felt about some people having come in and some people not coming in. And so the recommendation is actually coming from administration. With regards to 97 and D90, they are aware, but at this point, they have not shared with me what they are doing.
Thank you.
Uh, I have one question. Is the, so is the basis of this as a way to motivate people to come in to work?
It is a way to make sure that we have someone in the building for essential functions. One of the mandates, uh, from the school closures that we have to feed children. We have to be able to re-feed anyone between 18 years and younger who comes, whether on their reduced lunch or not, in order to make sure that those meals are prepped. And we actually also prep the meals for D97. Uh, D90 has gone to another process for that. So for example, on Monday, we had food service workers come in and we prepped 5,000 breakfasts and 5,000 lunches for need, for D97 and delivered them to their site so their parents could pick them up. We then prepped over 150 meals for our students to come up and get. That is happening again tomorrow so that we can feed families while we're out on spring break. And then for March 30th, because right now, we're, we were predicted to come back, but now we have to order food to take us through April 3rd. In order to have people to come in and do that work when they know others are staying at home, we felt we needed to have an incentive. Uh, during the election, we had to have safety and security on-site. We also have to have safety and security on-site as students have technological issues with their Chromebooks. They come up, they actually make an appointment, uh, online with members of our ET department. They come up, they transition those devices. So we have ET, we have two people at least from ET on-site every day. We have, uh, someone from safety and security at the welcome center in case someone should come in. We also had to conduct IEPs under, uh, the federal mandate this week. And so we had to have someone to ensure that the parents who wanted to do their IEPs on-site were in the building. Additionally, with the cleaning, we have a reduced staff from safety and security. But in order to ensure that we had someone there to do the deep cleaning, we felt that we needed to have some type of incentive for people to come in versus them being able to say, well, everybody else is getting paid to stay at home. So it was our way of incentivizing people to come in, yes.
Thank you.
I, I have an additional question, if I, I can go the back of the queue if others are.
I had a question. It's, uh, Jackie. Given our contract with District 97, um, how and can that be altered to, um, be able to absorb some of the, the, the costs, given this stretch of time where we're providing meals for them and having to order more food?
Um, I have a conference call with them scheduled for tomorrow. I can inquire about that. But even when school is open, we pro- we provide their meals.
Oh, no, I'm not saying that. I'm saying that we're paying time and a half for our food service workers. So that amount is being absorbed by District 200 at this point.
Yes.
Correct?
Yes.
Okay, so that's my question.
We've also been told that a fund is being established to make, by the government, to make sure that every employee is made whole and that there would be no negative impact on the district's budget.
Okay. Uh, and then the other is just a comment, and, um, I'm not sure about other aspects, but, um, I do know that CPS is paying their food service workers time and a half for the exact, you know, same reasons in terms of coming in. And, uh, I'm not sure about security or other aspects, but they are being paid time and a half. Um, and, you know, the other aspect of this is that, yes, Act of God days off, but there's also an increased risk, um, given that, um, this is a public health issue. So I think, you know, we have to factor that in. And the only other question I have is, are we being compliant by allowing students to come to school, um, for IT issues?
Well, the ET issues, they, they make an appointment. So it's never, and they bring their device, it's put in a Ziploc bag, we give them another device. But with that's, then that are, that is our way of making sure that they are able to participate in the online learning. We never have a lot of kids at one time.
No, I'm just saying from, are we, I would ask that question, given, um, we don't know, you know, what the, the levels are in terms of transmission or things like that, or who may be, who we're putting at risk. So I appreciate our desire to, and of course, um, you know, think that that's important. But at the same time, I think input of a public health person as to that procedure or if we need to change it or modify it, or maybe we don't do it. But I think that that But I think that that would be input that would be helpful to, you know, protect our students and our staff.
I will also inquire about that because one of the other directives that districts were given just across the board is the building has to be open for kids who need to eat. If there is a homeless child or child who has nowhere to go, not for daycare, but if they have nowhere to go, we could open a resource room for them. We've not had that issue, but that's one of the reasons they said to have an administrator on site. So if students come because they have nowhere else to go, that we have a space for them.
Oh, no, and I fully agree. I'm just thinking about the passing of the laptops and making sure we're having an appropriate, you know, that we are following the guidelines that have been outlined as a public health in this type of situation.
I believe they have, but I will double check with Chris and his team.
Thank you.
Dr. Adams, I have a question actually about the polls. Do we, is there any mechanism for a chargeback for the extra expenditures that we had for the days that we were open as a polling place?
So Friday, the 13th, was an institute day, and so we have to change the calendar for that. But ISB has said the districts who were planning for the closure could use those days as institute day. Monday, the 16th, for us, was an e-learning day, and so that was an emergency e-learning day. And so that, we have to put in the calendar. Any of the other days, ISB has already changed those automatically for school districts. They've also relaxed the number of e-learning days under the potential that districts will not open on the 31st.
Wait, my question maybe asked about, I was wondering, does the county or the state anyway reimburse us for the extra cost that we incurred to be open as a polling place?
Oh, I, I don't, you said, I want to make sure I heard you, you were very slow about the polling place?
Yeah, I mean, this is obviously something that occurs every lifetime, but do we ever get reimbursed for this aid or anything to the security and behalf of our staff that day?
I would have to divert to Cindy to look that up. I don't know what the agreement is with the polling place.
Yes, we usually do. We get about $100, yes, for that. But it's $100, I think, for each booth that's there is what we normally get. I could definitely take a look and see exactly, but I remember seeing the checks for $100. They issue about five or six of them to us, is what I remember seeing.
Can I, my backup?
Tom, it's Matt. Before you go, just before we move off of the time and a half topic, I just wanted to reiterate or echo what I've heard. I feel like it's very fair, it's only reasonable to provide more compensation to those who are coming in. So that's all I have to say.
My follow-up questions are twofold, just because of the timing, because the way this is written is that, I believe I'm looking at it, it really covers the, what the governor has said. So it runs from March 17th through March 30th, if I'm reading it correctly. So, two questions related to that. One is, we're already, you know, nearly through the four days of the Act of God, what has been communicated to the individuals who are already doing this work? And secondly, what, you know, this has a duration and what with, I know we're in the world of uncertainty, but with the potential for an extension of the, whatever we call this, Act of God, how will that play into this agreement?
We, when we met with the leaders from the bargaining units, we were very clear that this, the board had to approve it. We could not make them any promises because this was, you know, altering the negotiated agreement for a time period. The time we put in there was because that was the time given for the Act of God days. This evening, while we received an email that I've forwarded since we've been on this call from the state superintendent saying that districts should plan to be out beyond the 31st. And we had not discussed that, that's something we would have to look into, but we built it around the window that we were given at that time.
So would it be prudent if we approved this to have an amendment to it, to say that the duration should extend for as long as the Act of God is pending, either through ISB's directives or the governor's?
I think that would be a good thing to take to amend, yes. The other thing is, as we've been told constantly, that districts will be made whole and there should be no financial negative impact on the district. And they were, they are the ones who told people that to go back to their bargaining units to discuss the issues of the additional fees, monies.
So if we're talking about the amending the MOU to make it so that, you know, the likelihood of having to call a virtual meeting again to, you know, extend it in the next couple of weeks, doesn't seem prudent if there's a way that we can do that tonight.
I'm going to, I believe we can, Roxanna, your thoughts? Roxanna?
I believe so, I believe we can amend it. Actually, I was asked that question when various bargaining unit representatives came to sign the agreement. They asked me what happens next if Act of God days are extended, and I said we would have to revisit it. So they would definitely be open to it. And if we are all open to it, I don't see a problem amending.
Yeah, I, number one, I think it just makes sense from an administrative standpoint so that we could, we could have that same incentive operative during the period of time when some individuals are paid for just staying at home and we're trying to encourage others to come in. But I think, second, and to Matt's point, and something that I felt all along, the individuals that come in are being exposed to additional risk from a health standpoint. And, and I think we should acknowledge that some way or another, and I think this MOU does that. So I think from an administrative standpoint, it makes sense to extend it for the duration of the Act of God, whether declared by the governor or ISB. And frankly, we may have to include our good old Oak Park Village Board because they've got April 3rd out there as a date for us, and so we really can't open the school building generally till then anyway. But, but we should have the administrative flexibility to not have to come back and do a virtual meeting to just keep this in place for the duration of the exigency. It's, it's, Tom, and I don't, I have a follow-up just based on something I heard from you, Joy Lynn, just for quick clarification, because you talked about making whole. So my question is, with the current level of staffing, et cetera, are the district's costs above normal, meaning that, or is the overtime, et cetera, that we're incurring with this above what is typical? So that, you know, the district is incurring additional costs? And if so, did I understand you correctly that we expect someone to pay us for that differential?
I'll answer the second question first, yes, that someone will pay us for that, and I will get clarification. With regards to it being over, I think it's actually going to be under. And I'll defer to Roxanna and Cindy to see if I'm correct. Because we have fewer people on site to do overtime, because we don't have any activities going, so the person we pay to be there to facilitate, that's not overtime for them. The security we have in the buildings, when we have major events, that won't be happening. I actually think for the paid periods right now and for moving forward, it'd actually be lower than our normal overtime. Ladies, am I correct with that?
I absolutely agree.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Mm-hmm. Welcome.
What does this amendment look like? Is, Roxanna, do you want, do you want to try to help wordsmith some of this, if that's what we in fact want to do?
Maybe we can say, approve memorandum of understanding as amended in open session to include all mandatory closures?
Mandatory closures as determined by ISB?
Well, by governor, I don't know.
I think it would have to be any, I would say by any governmental authority with standing because we are subject to the village, we're subject to ISB, we're subject to the governor.
I, I agree with Mr. Martieri's recommendation because the closure as it exists now to the 3rd is from the 31st to the 3rd is by virtue of the village ordinance. So I think it would be correct to have any governing body.
If we just said mandatory closures, because if we as a district choose to close, that wouldn't be a mandatory closure, it would be voluntary.
That is correct.
Okay. Amend the MOA?
I can hardly hear you.
So sorry, I wish I had a better system here. Do we have to do a motion to amend the MOA?
So moved?
Second.
Gail, are you caught up with where we are?
Yes, but who was the one who seconded it, please?
Rowan.
Who?
I thought it was Gina.
Thank you.
Okay.
If there's no further discussion.
Okay. Shall I call the roll?
Yes, please.
Mr. Martieri?
Yes.
Mr., Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Kowski?
Yes.
Ms. Feige?
Yes.
Mr. Barron?
He's still muted.
Yes.
Mr. Isley?
No.
And Dr. Moore?
Yes.
Thank you.
The next agenda item is approval of resolution authorizing authority to hire essential staff under agreements with bargaining representatives of its bargaining representative of its staff members. So moved?
Second.
Do we have any discussion on this item?
Yes, I guess I'm just asking for a little more rationale.
When we first brought it forward, we had not had the authority yet to do a virtual meeting. And it's just in case of emergency where we can't, if we don't get a quorum, it gives me the authority to make sure the bills get paid. Only in case of emergency. If the board can meet, then it doesn't have to go into effect. Now that we have the opportunity for virtual meetings, as long as we have a quorum, it's not necessary. So it was just an emergency precaution.
Joy Lynn, I think you're referring to I, and we're on H?
Oh, the hiring central staff, okay. I'm sorry, because there's two in there. Yes, this is in case there's some hiring, because we did a virtual interview yesterday, and luckily, we were able to get the item in, but it's the same thing, only in case of an emergency that the board, we can't get a quorum for a special board meeting or we can't get a quorum for the regular board meeting.
And what does it mean that you can't get, you can't get it in time, or you can't?
Well, no, that's not it. So, for example, heaven forbid, let me say that, that at the special board meeting after the cow, we go to have the special board meeting, and we don't have, maybe one board, maybe one or two board members or three board members can't call in for one reason or another. And so we can't have a virtual meeting or a live meeting. It gives me to the authority to hire any essential positions that we may need because this is hiring season. Classroom teachers, for example. Luckily, we got the two done, we did a virtual interview, we got the recommendations in for the two today, but it was just a precautionary measure. It only goes into effect if we can't get a quorum of the board.
All right.
For some reason, you were not able to make that decision, would it have passed to Greg?
I can't hear you.
Heaven forbid, but if for some reason you were unable to make that determination yourself, would the authority have passed to Greg?
Sarah, to me, you're breaking up. I still don't know what you're saying.
Let me maybe try to translate. Joy Lynn, I think Sarah's asking, would, if you can't be the one to do the hiring authority, would Greg Johnson be the next to have that authority? Do we have that embedded in this?
It would be Greg or either Roxanna, yes. But yes, we may want to build that in.
So would that have to be language specific to that, because that doesn't appear currently in the resolution? Will we need to add that into the resolution?
I can't hear.
Yes, Sarah, I'm having a really hard time hearing you too.
So.
Sorry, guys, I don't know how to make it better.
Yeah, I.
That's better.
Oh, yeah, maybe closer, but I can, so I won't try to speak to you, Sarah, you can just repeat maybe.
If people can hear me, do we need to put that in the resolution now? Do we need to say Dr. Pruitt Adams or her designee?
Sure.
Yes, I agree, I think that's wise.
So I move to amend the current resolution to include that language, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Any more questions or comments?
This is Matt. I'll just say that I understand the need to do this for this window of time, and the best laid plans are clearly out the window right now with everything. And so I think it's prudent to do this, and I think it's, it's a matter of trusting our superintendent and to use it with discretion if ever. And so I think it's just a sign of the times, and this is for a temporary window of time until we're through this strange period.
May I take a roll?
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Isley?
Yes.
Mr. Barron?
Yes.
Mr. Martieri?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Kowski?
Yes.
Ms. Feige?
Yes.
And Dr. Moore?
Yes.
Thank you.
So now we're on to I, approval of resolution authorizing authority to prove, to approve, oh wait, am I, I'm sorry, am I, yeah, to approve accounts payable, payroll and student activity expenditures. Is there a second?
Second.
And before we get started on this, I would move to amend it to include Dr. Pruitt Adams or her designee as well, as we did with the prior resolution.
Second.
Any questions, comments? Gail, could you call the roll, please?
Yes, Mr. Barron? Mr. Barron? I'll come back. Mr. Isley?
Yes.
Mr. Martieri?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Kowski?
Mr. Kowski?
Yes.
Ms. Feige?
Yes.
Dr. Moore?
Yes.
And Mr. Barron?
Yes.
Thank you. You're muted, Sarah.
Sorry, um, item J, approval of audit RFP, so moved?
Second.
Discussion? Gail, could you please call the roll?
Yes, uh, Mr. Isley?
Yes.
Mr. Martyrri?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Kowski?
Yes.
Ms. Feige?
Yes.
Mr. Barron?
Yes.
And Dr. Moore?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, and item K is not, has been pulled from the agenda.
Correct.
Um, now, we have an information item, um, from our committee of the whole, the IDA grant and DRS grant programs, uh, and future agenda items. Does anybody have any suggested future agenda items?
Who?
Um, oh, go ahead, Craig.
No, I didn't have any time.
Oh, I'm sorry, I just, I don't have a future agenda item, but I wanted to, for past, present, and future, given these uh, trying times under a pandemic, just thank our administration, um, and Joy Lynn, your um, steady leadership. And I don't know how you all are even able to sit up right now. I know it's been almost around the clock. So, thank you for um, putting us in a position of feeling as though we're on top of things and providing a safe space for our students and staff.
Thank you very much, uh, my team has been, I mean, my team has been amazing, but I want to just say, every single individual in this district has stepped up to the plate and is doing everything we can for our kids. So, thank you so much for saying that. We have really come together as a community at OPRF.
It shows, thank you.
So moved.
Yeah, I would, I would echo that and appreciate all the communication, it's been really impressive. And um, so, thank you very much to you and your team.
Thank you.
Hey, I would like to add something, Dr. Pruitt-Adams. Uh, being a person who's in education and um, having experienced a one-day move to online platform, I really commend everything that you guys have done and done it so seamlessly for all of our students and the community. And I have to also say that I've heard multiple comments from people in the community about how amazing everyone on the staff and how our administration has just been wonderful. So, I just know what it's been like um, being in this process, and I do hope at some point you get some rest. Thank you for everything.
Thank you.
For this supplement, I'd just still help you. We, we really desperately need you guys.
Thank you.
Um, anything else this evening?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
On favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Chris, thank you for pulling this together, or, good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris, well done.
Thank you all.
Thank you everyone.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you all, good night.
All right, good night.
Gail?
Yes.
Would you make sure that that agenda item for Mike's facility thing gets posted?
Yes, I will definitely do that now.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.